Hello everyone, my name is Wilson Chow and I am a junior at Malden High and I'm a near reverse youth. I have been part of the Malden Public Schools systems for around 11 to 12 years and let me tell you, it's, I couldn't ask to be anywhere else. With Malden, I am able to meet so many people from so many backgrounds and so many different cultures and as someone that values diversity, I'm really grateful for the opportunity that the Malden gave me. Keeping that in mind, the 2020 census is coming up. Approximately six months from now, everyone will be getting notifications to complete their census questionnaires. Our neighborhoods are changing rapidly. Thus, it is necessary for Malden to make sure that we have the resources available to stabilize the community and that's why we need a complete and accurate count of the people within these communities. Not only does the census influence funding for public schools, it also impacts community development, block grants for affordable housing, Medicaid funding, Section 8 vouchers, language access via social service block grants, and et cetera. This year, the city of Malden received $2.1 million for Title I school funding, $1.3 million for the community development block grant, and $845,000 for the home affordable housing program. These amounts are based on census information, so for those that are here, please fill out your census because they help us so much. Now allow me to introduce Gretchen Bryant-Mysles, who will be the moderator for today's forum. Gretchen is a lecturer at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Her research seeks to explore partnerships between youth and adults that support both individual and collective development. She is particularly interested in how youth-adult partnerships can address issues of equity and inclusion in schools. Among other projects, Gretchen is currently working with educators in three districts to explore research questions related to the root cause of inequity for the schools. Please join me in welcoming our moderator for tonight.
Hi everyone, thank you for having me here. I am honored to be in Malden and to be able to learn from your candidates tonight. My role in this process is really to make sure that we keep on time and we get a chance to hear from everyone, so I'm gonna do my best to do that, although it's not my personality to cut people off, I will probably do that as well. And I want to start by just again thanking all of the candidates for being here with us tonight, for taking the time to answer these incredibly important questions about how they're thinking about equity in the context of the Malden Public Schools, and welcoming them and saying that we're happy to hear from them. I also just want to acknowledge folks who are here tonight, and I apologize if I don't get your names perfectly, but from Ward 1, we have Michael Drummy, I also can't see the order we're in. Ward 2, Anna Jeffroy. Ward 2, Robert McCarthy Jr. Ward 3, Jennifer Spatafora. Ward 4, Leonard Iovino. Ward 4, Dawn Macklin. Ward 5, Adam Weldy. Ward 6, Renee Dean. Ward 6, Joseph Gray. Ward 7, Keith Bernard. Ward 7, Michelle Wong. Ward 8, John Froio. And Ward 8, Rachel Running. And we're very excited to have you all here tonight. So the way this is gonna work is that we are going to give each candidate a very lengthy two minutes for an opening statement, then we'll go through four rounds of questions, and then we'll give each candidate a minute for a closing statement. And unfortunately, given how many candidates we have, we'll only have a minute each for the candidates to answer each question, so this is gonna be a challenge for all of us. So, I'm gonna start by passing this mic down and inviting Adam to start with an opening statement. Is that okay? Okay, then we'll go out in this direction and then we'll go back out in that direction.
Good evening, my name is Adam Weldy and I'm proud to be running for the Malden School Committee and honored that my friends and neighbors in Ward 5 have trusted me once again with this responsibility. I'll put it down, I'll stop touching it too.
The first thing that I'd like to do, and I'm glad that she's here, is give a shout
out and a thank you to, oh it's off again, that's cool, Tara Beardsley, who's here right now, she's right there. I'm very glad that for the past four years Tara's been my school committee representative. She does a great job of cutting through the noise, always standing up for what's right, and advocating for what she believes in. I know that her advocacy for the same things that I believe in, things like equity between our K-8 schools, recess focusing on students' social, emotional health, libraries, literacy for all of our students, just to name a few, will continue. I myself am a product of our schools and I'm a public school educator, I'm a local union president for my chapter of the Mass Teachers Association, and an active community member here in Malden. However, what drives me the most this time around is my experience working in the system. I spent a phenomenal year with the team at the Forestdale School, acting as a building administrator, gaining my principal licensure, and working with the stellar team of staff and community members in that building. There, I saw the actual policies, procedures, and budgetary decisions that we make on the school committee in action. I saw what worked and what didn't work, I saw leadership at its best, and I saw the ways that we as school committee members affect our students and teachers that we never see. So this time around, I have a little bit different, more whole lens, and I'll make sure that I'm looking at the issues in front of us from all those different angles, but most especially, the ways in which our decisions affect our students, the people that matter the most. So thank you to everybody who put this together, and thank you for hosting us tonight, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening everyone, my name is Dawn Macklin, I am a resident of Malden, I also work in Malden, in Malden Center. I first wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge and remember Congressman Elijah Cummings who passed today, we really lost a great one, and so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him. I'm running for school committee because I have a grandson that is in the 4th grade, he has special needs, he's on a 504 plan, and we have difficulty with the teachers and ensuring that the 504 plan is getting implemented, and I know that we're not the only ones, and I know that with the classroom overcrowding, it's become an issue, and I'm here to rally behind everyone and see if we can hire more teachers, diverse teachers. That's one of the things that I think is really important, that we have students that have teachers that look like them and reflect them in the classroom. I know that we're making strides with that, but we're not where we should be. And so with that, with the equity and the inclusion, the diversity, and with my special needs boy, I hope that I'm able to gain your vote and your confidence on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank, just keep going, just keep going, okay. Thank you very much, I look forward to being here this evening. My name's Leonard Iivino, I am currently the Ward 4 representative for Malden, Ward 4 on the Malden School Committee. My background is, I've been a lifelong educator in the city of Malden as a teacher and as a principal. I am motivated to run, I was motivated to run for school committee many years ago by the lessons that I learned at home from, who were my first teachers, my mother and father, who always stressed the need that good government only happens when good men and women become involved and they want to make the system better. My candidacy has been based upon that, pardon me, I've always worked in what's to be in the best interest of all the students in this city. Equity is certainly, and racial equality is certainly a number one issue, if it's not number one, it should be. In terms of my budget priorities, we want to, always, always, we need a strong budget to support a strong standards-based curriculum which we have. It will see our students to success no matter where they are in this 21st century. My budget priorities also include making sure that all special needs students and all English language learners receive all of the services to which they are entitled. It's something that is not only necessary, it is lawful, it is statute. So I look forward to answering your questions tonight. I should stress that I have a bachelor's degree from Northeastern University in School of Education and a master's degree in Public School Administration from Suffolk University. And my entire career in education has been in this city that I love. Thank you.
Looks like I give the new microphone. Good evening to those in attendance, thank you for our hosts and our moderator for taking the time out to put this event together. My name is Jennifer Spatafora, I am the current Ward 3 school committee representative, and I am sitting before you because I am running for reelection. I am a mom to three children, one that has navigated her way through Malden Public Schools, one that's into bits of it, and one that couldn't be educated in the district, and we pursued an out-of-district placement. And I've spoken two years ago to this and have stood firm that heat is the reason I decided to run for state meeting. I sit here before you now because that job is not done and I need more time. We still have students missing recess as punishment, we have students rallying, rallying for diverse educators. When we have our after-school program fees doubled, and when the state is close, but not yet close enough to funding our schools, that's why I stand before you, because my job is not done. What I hope and aim to accomplish over the next two years, open and honest communication from our administration, holding our superintendent accountable to be a transpat district, a collaboratively work with city councilors and councilors at large on issues that affect our schools, continue to advocate for an inclusive and equitable school environment for all of our students, work to make our school committee meetings more accessible, whether it's through connect ed calls, to ensure all families are notified that they have a voice in this district, and I'll continue to hold our state legislatures accountable to ensure that we get the funding we deserve. So I look forward to seeing your faces at the polls November 5th and I ask for your vote then. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Robert S. McCarthy Jr. and I would like to thank all of the organizers of this event for the opportunity to share my vision with the voters here in Malden. I'm currently the school committee member here in Malden for Ward 2. By the way of background, I am a homeowner and a taxpayer here in the city of Malden. Over the last several months, I have worked hard, knocking on doors and listening to the concerns of the residents of Ward 2. I intend to work just as hard up until 8:00 PM on Tuesday, November 5th. I am an educator by day and I have a master's degree in school leadership and administration. During my first term on the committee, I supported and voted for the Safe Schools Resolution, which I'm very proud of. I strongly advocated for additional school funding to hire 10 additional teachers for the sole purpose of lowering class size hopefully, here in the city of Malden, and to make sure that all classes have adequate enrollment in our education we sound. I voted to approve the balanced school budgets over the, over my last two years, that are fully funded and put the needs of all students first here in Malden. I served on the Social and Emotional Subcommittee to address improving recess conditions here in the Malden Public Schools. Lastly, each and every vote that I have taken has been in the best interest of all students here in Malden. I respectfully ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 5th, which is election day. Thank you very much.
Good evening everyone, my name is Anna Jeffrey and I'm running for school committee in Ward 2. I'm a Malden Public School mom of nine years and I've been an activist for a wide variety of causes for the last decade. Over that time, I've learned a lot as a parent, I've been through a lot of the joys and struggles that all other public school parents face. I've had to deal with transportation issues in the morning, had to deal with bullying, going in for IEP meetings, but also the wonderful things that come with living in such a diverse community and having my children learn so much about their friends and neighbors. Being an activist means that you don't settle for good enough though. It means you look at the problems and you say, there has to be a way we can do something about this. How do we get the people together? How do we get civic groups, parents, families, even children who want to advocate for their own needs? How do we get them all to the table so that everyone can contribute to the solutions that we need? Malden is a great city, but it's also a city that faces a lot of challenges. There's a reason that I volunteered my time with the Fund Our Future campaign this year, to make sure that Malden gets the funding from the state that it needs. It's because we've been operating with a lot less money than we need from the state. I plan to continue advocating for things that matter. I want to make sure that we're raising the voices of our children, of our students, and of our families. I want to make sure that everybody feels heard on school committee and feels like we're making progress even when it's difficult. We have a lot of difficult decisions to make as we work towards equity in our K-8 schools, and it's only gonna happen if we are listening to families about what they need and how, finding interesting ways to bring everybody to the table and getting all of our resources put towards actual solutions. I hope to have your vote this November 5th, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll come back to the table if that's okay, and then fan out in the other direction.
Hi, my name is Renee Dean. Thank you all for coming here tonight, and thank you for having us. I have been a Malden resident for 16 years now, I have three children in the Malden School System, and I have been active in the school for the past six years, working for kids and our families, and I would like to continue to do that here as part of the school committee and continue the good work that has already been started here, and I hope that you will vote for me on November 5th.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Gray, I'm running for Ward 6 School Committee. I would like to thank everyone for hosting us and this team for putting this together, and I'd also like to thank our predecessors, one of whom is here tonight, the prior Ward 6 School Committee member, Jared Ione, who's good enough to come out and give me a shout out here, and I'd also like to thank the prior school committee member, Colleen Leon, who spent the last couple of years doing a lot of hard YOON's work. This is an administrative position, it's difficult work, it's tough decisions, sometimes there are no good options. I've been an advocate, I've been fighting causes from one end of this city to the other for at least 10 years now, in the schools, on the streets, in the playgrounds. I hope to get your vote, I hope to be on the school committee, I'm willing to make the hard decisions on the tough topics about school times, repairs to school buildings, staffing, curriculum, you name it, I'll tackle it. Thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Keith Bernard and I'm running for Ward 7 School Committee. I want to go and thank the organizers of this event, and I want to go and thank our moderator for giving her time. Many have asked me, why am I running? Well, my mother was a school nurse and she was a special needs teacher. She embraced every child, each child that she took care of, as if they were her own. Even after she retired, she took the time to go and volunteer to make sure that those kids still got the care and the education that they deserved. Her selflessness and her commitment to those kids is one of my greatest inspirations. The other reason that I'm running is that I understand the struggles that many of our neighbors are going through. I've been that parent who worked two jobs to make sure a roof is over my head and my child's head. I skipped meals so that I could more afford to go and pay for formula for my son. I've had conversations in the ward with parents and children from one end of the ward to the other. I've heard how hard it is to get their child an IED and to make sure that it's being followed. I've heard how hard it is that they, that they don't go and see their faces reflected in the staff, and that they would like to see more diversity in the teaching, in the teachers and the staff. I spoke to one parent who chose to pull their child from the school because of bullying and lack of service. I want our families to know that I want to be their voice. We have challenges in our school systems and only together can we find solutions to overcome them. I will work with our state representatives to make sure that we get the funding that our families deserve. I will continue to advocate for diverse hiring in our diverse community and clear reporting of bullying and racist incidents. Our city's diverse community is not a weakness, it's a strength and a promise for a proud future. My name is Keith Bernard, I'm asking for your vote on November 5th.
Good evening, my name's Michelle Wong, I'm running for school committee Ward 7. I just want to say thank you to the organizers of this event, we greatly appreciate the time that was put into this. A little bit about me, I'm a mom, a wife, I have two amazing girls that go to the high school, and I've been navigating for the past 12 years their journey, the good, the bad, and the ugly, through the Malden Public Schools. So my older daughter, I have to tell you, is dyslexic, and why is that important? It's important because I spent the past 12 years navigating the IEP process, watching her struggle, having to have her outplaced, bring her back, and watch her succeed, and really tirelessly working through that. And we had our last IEP meeting, and I said, geez, I'm done. And then I thought about it and I said, I'm not done. Because our successes and wonderful things that were able to happen for us need to happen for the people in Ward 7. I'm a lifelong Ward 7 resident, I've been there when we had school choice, and I'm here now when we have neighborhood schools. And it's, it's a struggle for these people, they want educational equality, they want all five schools to be the same. We need district-wide gifted programs, we need district-wide, English as a second language, district-wide everything, we just, all five schools need to be equal. I found seven residents with severe bullying issues on my campaign trail, and I just find it unacceptable. So I put forth the Sandy Hook Promise, and I'm hoping that the superintendent will push that forward. I'm here to advocate for Ward 7 and to advocate for the rest of the, rest of the Malden Public Schools, and I'll give you my best. Thank you, and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Good evening residents of Ward 8 in Malden, residents of Malden. First I would like to thank all of the community organizations who sponsored this forum. My name is John Froio, candidate for reelections on the Malden School Committee, Ward 8. I am a lifelong resident of Malden. I attended the Malden Public Schools and graduated from Malden High School. My four children were also educated in Malden Public Schools. I was a vocational educator for 28 years at Malden High School. Because of this, I have a strong commitment to public education and the Malden School System. Currently, I serve on the following committees on the school committee. The Finance Committee where I have been coach here for the past three years, I'm on various contract negotiations teams, negotiating with the teachers, the parents, the administrators, and the cafeteria workers. I'm also on the Sicily Bank and Space Enrollment Committee. I am actively involved in the community, including the following organizations. I'm on the Malden High School Alumni Association Board of Directors, Kiwanis Club Board of Directors. Both organizations serve the community and the students of Malden via various fundraisers, literacy programs, and scholarships. School safety is a top priority of mine. Students should feel safe in their environment from emotional and physical harm and not be afraid to go to school. They never should be afraid to go to school. I am also committed to making Malden High School a true comprehensive high school, meaning the school would be equipped with more vocational courses open to students at Malden High. I will continue to push for our schools to offer more, can I just finish? To offer more technology courses for the system, where they focus on expanding the vocational courses at the high school level. To accomplish this, I am working diligently with our state representative to pass the Student Opportunity Act, which will provide additional funds to schools. Thank you to the residents in attendance, I look forward to continuing to represent and work with you. Thank you, and vote on Ward, on November 5th for John Froio, Warding.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, I'm Rachel Running and I'm a candidate for school committee in Ward 8, and I'm running because I love our city, and I want to help shape our school district's future as a diverse, modern, and equitable place for our children. When my wife Sarah and I came to Malden, we knew right away that we wanted our kids to live here and we wanted to make this our home. This is such a strong and caring community and we love it here. Our kids are now in kindergarten and 2nd grade at the Linden, and when I walk them to school each day and see our children running around and playing, talk with our hard-working teachers, and all are really involved and wonderful parents, I know that my perspective as a public school parent is needed on the school committee. I've dedicated my professional life to fighting for economic justice, family-supporting jobs, and equity. I'm currently the Communications Coordinator for the Massachusetts AFL-CIO, which is the state's umbrella organization for labor unions, and I'm also a proud 19-year union member myself. I have a track record of helping to pass solutions-oriented policy, and in recent years I've really dedicated myself to working hard on legislation related to our state education funding crisis, including on the Student Opportunity Act, which will restructure our state's outdated education funding formula, as well as on the Fair Share Amendment, which is legislation that would bring $2 billion of education and transportation funding to Massachusetts. The decisions we make today in city government will have an impact for many years to come. As a strong believer in transparency, I want to help strengthen the voices of parents, students, and community members to have a say in decisions that affect their lives. Our diversity is our strength. We all take pride in our diverse student body, and I want to help address the lack of diversity among our staff and teachers. It's time to solve a substitute teacher crisis in Malden. Our subs aren't paid a fair wage and we can't retain substitute teachers in our schools. I have spent my, my career fighting for working people and I plan to use that same passion and commitment to fight for our students and our wonderful community. I hope I can earn your vote. Wonderful, thank you everyone.
So, I'm gonna proceed to ask the questions, I want to acknowledge and thank first of all the community members and especially the young people who contributed questions for tonight. I compiled these questions and synthesized them so that we would get down to four, so they're gonna be in my words, but the questions themselves came from community members and young folks. And this time we'll start at the edges, but we'll start on this side just to give Rachel a chance to breathe, and then we'll come back to the middle. So the mics, I think the mic can stay on the edge because we're gonna go out one end this time. Yeah, I'm gonna give it out later. Okay. So the first question is, as you know, Malden is a racially, ethnically, and linguistically diverse community with a growing number of immigrant families. Can you provide some examples of how you have worked with immigrant communities in the past and how you plan to do so in the future? And as part of your response, can you please speak directly to how you think the Malden Public Schools can better connect with families whose primary language is not English? whose primary language is not English?
Thank you very much. One of the most important things that the Malden Public Schools are working on right now is making sure that more of the communications that go home are actually being translated and are going home in the languages that the parents speak in these households. It's work that we need to continue doing. We can't lose momentum on that. I acknowledge that we haven't been perfect and we need to keep going. When it comes to working with immigrant communities, as I said in my introduction, I've done a lot of activist work, which means I sort of get thrown into interesting things, so I wound up marshaling for events, advocating for things like the Dream Act and protecting immigrant families. And it's always interesting going to these events and learning, you know, chants that you already knew but in another language and trying to connect with people who you don't understand very well in the moment, but you know what's going on, you know the use of what they believe in. So, I just want to keep doing that outreach going forward and I know that the most important thing is making sure that people understand what's going on in this place.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much for that question. It's a very important question, especially here in Malden. Like I said in my opening statement, I work at a technical high school that is actually very, very, very diverse. And I see it every single day that the different populations that we have in that school system, it's very difficult in most cases for these people to be able to understand different languages and we try to work around that. So that's experience that I have working with educators and people of diverse populations. Moving forward, obviously this is going to be a very hard task, making sure that we're inclusive with all backgrounds and all races. And I look forward to having those discussions in the future as being a member of the Malden School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We definitely can be doing better when it comes to our immigrant families. You know, currently, right now, we do send out our Connect Ed calls in five different languages. That is such a small portion of the amount of students that we have that are represented in our school district. We need to look into how we can get that information out to everybody. Do I have the answer? No. I'm hoping with the passing of the Student Opportunity Act, that will bring more funds into our district, which we can explore, being able to not only increase our communication through calls, but through, you know, translating our superintendent newsletters, principal newsletters, and even going as far as making sure that our school committee meetings are actually broadcasted in different languages. I've been a supporter of the Dream Act. I think any child that steps foot into our school should be protected and felt safe and know that they belong in our community. And I'll continue to fight for those rights for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With regard to the question, Malden, the diversity in Malden, we've recognized that, this is the second year of many of the programs that are going to address that. The Anti-Defamation League, the World of Difference Program, the Harvard Rights Program, the Influence 100 Grant. And we have two principals from the Malden Public Schools that were invited to participate in that grant. They were notified of it just last Friday. This is in part funded by the DESE and in part by the BA Foundation. And it's the belief that by increasing racial and ethnic diversity of educators, it will help to address and close the achievement gap in our schools. The Harvard Rights Program focuses on changing school cultures and issues of equity and racism and providing students with tools to recognize those and how to dismantle it. The World Indifference Program at the Anti-Defamation League of Boston trains people to help students, especially young students, to recognize attitudes and beliefs that affect people's actions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard.
Hello. So, we know that Malden is very diverse and I know that when I went to Salemwood that we were told there were, I believe, over 60 languages spoken at the school. While that would be extremely difficult to translate every newsletter, everything that goes home in over 60 languages, we need to reach out to the community. We need to reach out to the parents and to the families and ask them, what is the best way that we need to communicate with you, whether it's through email translations or if we have a variety of folks on staff that speak different languages. It's important that we are inclusive and I think by doing, by reaching out to those in the community, we can find out better how to communicate with them. We don't have the answers here and I think that open communication with the students and with the families and the community would be our best bet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think I myself am a product of a multicultural, multilingual, mixed-race household. I grew up in our school system. I think in terms of my professional experience, I'll say serving on the school committee previously was a part of that, but I'm currently an educator and administrator in Chelsea, neighboring Chelsea. So I think I do a lot of very specific things with our kids involved that, you know, relate to equity inclusiveness. We have a lot of immigration issues that we deal with on a regular basis. You know, for us as a system moving forward, you know, there's things that we can do that take money. We could look at, I'd love to see parent liaisons in our district, not out of the pick, actual apparent liaisons. Translation at our school committee meetings, but then I think about all the things that we could be doing that don't cost money. And I'm going to give a shout out because she's my favorite teacher, to my mom, who's here, who's a second-grade teacher at the Linden, who actually has a partnership through her classroom with the Immigrant Learning Center, where we're not just reaching out to the immigrant families in our community, but the actual immigrants in our community who might not be families. Making those connections is free and making sure that we foster those relationships are free and we should be doing more of that.
Thank you. Thank you for pausing. We're going to go back out to Rachel.
So, as an activist and in my line of work, I fought alongside immigrant communities in the fights for justice against, I've started on coalitions fighting wage stuff. I've worked on, you know, been on the picket line with janitors and really helped support and move forward a lot of these justice issues in my work. You know, I'm really excited we're talking about this. I attended the Malden Core Rally this summer and I heard from a lot of students who said, you know, they felt that the schools had failed them. They felt that their needs weren't being met. And I think that's a major signal that we need to really dive deep. And I'm excited to do that and work in partnership with a lot of you to do so. You know, I think we need to do more outreach. I do think we need to translate more, translate PTO meetings and really get to the school level and look at community events where we celebrate our diversity. It's about celebrating our cultures, you know, even just having, you know, celebrating our families' nights and really bringing it into the level where the students are interacting from an early grade. And that's it.
As we know, Malden is a diverse community. When I taught, when I taught my room, I treated all my students the same. They all looked the same to me and they were all treated the same. And what a world this could be if everybody did that. Also, some of the things that can be done is, any communications that go home to the students' families should possibly be put in their language. That would definitely help a lot. Thank you.
Hello. One of the things that I have done, I have actually worked with the Zont Club of Malden where we pushed women and children's issue forward through service and advocacy. I've worked with, I've been the child's advocate for my own daughter and other families and especially families that don't know really the right questions to ask. My concern is more for the families because some people, Malden's their first stop. So they come here and they think the teachers and the administrators are the end-all, be-all and everything they say is gold, which isn't always the case. So my concern is for those families that don't know what to ask, how to ask, where. So my point would be that I want translators that can help them to translate through to some of these IEP meetings and some of these teacher meetings and really be their voice.
You know, I've gone and been a supporter of immigrant rights. I marched with SEIU this last Labor Day. I was proud to get out and speak in favor of going and putting forth a resolution to go and prevent ICE from being on our properties, on our school properties. At a school committee meeting recently, I agree with what's being said here. We do need to go and make sure that we're going and being very deliberate in trying to go and reach out to these communities, forming bonds and connections with existing organizations and making sure that parents and families feel included, that we're actually trying to go and make deliberate intention and intentional movement towards going, making sure they understand where we're coming from, that we're trying to do everything that we can for their kids and that they understand exactly what the processes of our that are happening. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Ray. I am an immigrant. I'm from Trinidad. We're naturalized citizens of the United States of America. I, in my opinion, easily move among multiple cultures, multiple religions, multiple everything. We're a multicultural family, both Christian and Hindu. You may not notice it by looking at me, but I'm an annual volunteer who helps put on the Filipino Festival here in Malden every single year. One of my great friends, Nikita Lamore, occasionally I assist her with putting on Haitian language teaching sessions. Obviously, I don't speak Haitian, but I do a lot of work in multiple communities all across the city and across Massachusetts. It's going to be interesting, it's going to be tough. Obviously, I don't speak English, but it'd be great to get people who can help us with multiple languages in the school systems. Thank you.
As someone who has worked on the PTO for the last six years, we've had a lot of challenges trying to get people the information that we need and working through different forms, getting it out there through Facebook, through websites, creating different places for people to go, has really worked for our community to let people know and to give them a way to find out about events and things that are going on. And in doing all of this work, we've also, we run into a lot of different, the diversity, the different things that people have for their religions and we're very quick to react, so. Sorry. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. So our second question relates again to this question of representation. Although the Malden community is racially, ethnically, and linguistically diverse, our teachers and administrators do not reflect this diversity. What are your ideas about how we can recruit and retain more teachers of color? And in the meantime, how can we ensure that educators are using culturally and linguistically sustaining practices? So just because of the mic, I've repeated. What are your ideas about how we can recruit and retain more teachers of color? And in the meantime, how can we ensure that educators are using culturally and linguistically sustaining practices? And Adam, I'm going to start with you again, if that's okay.
That's okay. This is not a 60-second question. I mean, honestly, this is not a 60-second question. It's just, it's not. So I think recruiting and retaining are two very, I have to stop touching it. Recruiting and retaining are two very different things. Recruiting, I think, is one thing. We need to put ourselves in the mind of a 22-year-old college kid who just popped out of school. You know, they don't care, I think, as much about the conversations that we internally are having as much as how much we're going to pay them. So if we don't raise our starting salary, if we don't raise our starting salary, then we're not going to compete with Everett, with Boston, with Revere, even with Chelsea. So I think that's a big piece of it. Or incentivizing our own diverse community to come back here and teach. It's nice that we recognize them in a ceremony, but there was $0 attached to that. So it'd be great if we could incentivize our own kids coming back. That's the recruit piece. I think the retain piece is more about making sure we have systems and structures in place to foster a diverse community, making sure people know that they're not the only person of color in the system, that there are ways to support them, that we, you know, allow them to take some creative liberties with curriculum, to diversify it, and to make sure that they know that we want them to stay. That's actually a big piece of it. We want you to stay. Someone's saying that to you and someone working with you, which doesn't always happen. Yeah, thanks.
So some of the ideas that I've had about recruiting, I attended an HBCU, Lincoln University, where Lincoln was, is the first degree grant in black college in university in Pennsylvania. I think it would be wonderful for us to approach some of the students in the HBCUs that are majoring in education and try to get them to Malden at job fairs and so forth. But, you know, one of the major problems and issues, and I'm sure a lot of us experienced this, Malden is really not becoming affordable for us anymore. And, you know, with the lower salaries that we're offering and the extremely exorbitant rent, it's difficult for anyone to maintain a lifestyle in Malden. So we've got to think outside of the box. We've got to think of ways where we can maybe give stipends or work with these new developers and ask them to maybe implement a preferred educator program where teachers can get 25% off or get a month free. We've got to think of creative ways and outside of the box to bring people to Malden.
Thank you. Recruiting has always been difficult. You have to vet people. They have to submit their applications. They have to be certified. They have to be qualified. We, Malden, over the past, for as many years as I've been on the school committee, our budget figure comes to us very, very late in the process, so we're late going out to job fairs. We don't know what we have to work with. By the time we're there, it may be too late to recruit people of color. We would like nothing better than to do that. I don't think our teacher salaries are that far below the average, although we wish we could pay you more. You're never paying what you're worth, believe me. I know that. The other thing is that I think the federal government needs to step up to the plate to help people who are in colleges, young people come out of college with massive amounts of debt. When I was a junior at Northeastern, I had to borrow money, but I borrowed it under the National Defense Education Act. And thank God for President Lyndon Johnson, because I would have been unable to finish college. It was a deal where you went into public education. Over a period of 10 years, you could write off 10% of the loan each year. I never would have been able to graduate without it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me tackle this in a little different way and say, why are students not going down the road of profession for, to become an educator? I'm going to say standardized testing, something that we need to eliminate. It creates wide achievement gaps and minorities cannot pass these tests based on their background. We have, you know, students that are holding down jobs because of their family situation and not being able to pass a test because they have different priorities, therefore not passing high school 10th grade MCAS tests. Remove that barrier and maybe we'll have more minorities that have the opportunity to go on to school, go on to become educators. But we need to look well before they get to that point. We need to stop looking at college-age students and look at the students we're educating now and make sure that they're getting an equitable education. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. Obviously, like a couple of the other speeches I've said this evening, retention is a very, very... very real situation, and it's very difficult in many senses, but why don't we just go back to getting students, former graduates of the Malden Public Schools, coming into education and then bringing them back as student teachers, and hopefully down the road as being full-time teachers, K-12, and hopefully being able to incentivize them with proper salaries that are going to show that they are valued here in Malden, which I'm in full support of. And I think that is probably the best possible way, from my perspective, I should go above doing it. Thank you.
So like Adam said, this is not a 60-second question. Fortunately, I don't have to come up with an answer in 60 seconds because we have community organizations already talking about this problem and already coming up with what they think are the best solutions to this problem. We need to listen to groups like Malden Core, who has put out their five points of what they think would help us retain teachers. One of those things is making sure that we have a system for reporting incidences of racism in our schools, whether it's something that happens to a teacher, to a parent on the playground, or to a student. We don't have processes for reporting that that are consistent across our schools, and that'd be one huge step to help make sure that everybody feels safe and welcome in our schools, not just our students, but also our staff. Listening to these civic organizations, listening to the people who are affected and who are living these things is the most important thing that we can do.
Thank you. We'll start over.
Thank you. Well, I would like to echo what Adam and Anna both said. I think that's important. I know my kids have only had a handful of diverse teachers in their experience here, and they would do-- it would be very beneficial to them to have more diverse teaching staff, so...
This is a tough topic, and I'm not just gonna repeat what everybody else said. What I've already said in a previous forum somewhere is that if I'm elected, I will tackle this directly by going directly to the mayor and the superintendent, who are already on record as having plans in place to deal with this specific issue. What I intend to do is evaluate at that time, what are they doing? What specifically are their plans? And see if we can come up with recommendations on how it can be tackled better, because if the people are not available for these specific positions, if minorities are not applying for these jobs and the pool just isn't there, we can't make something out of nothing. So I'll evaluate what plans are in place, what's already being done, and we'll try to pick it up a notch from that point forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that you're absolutely right, and this is not a 60-second question. There's no 60-second answer, because this is the same question that got asked two years ago, and I still feel that it hasn't been answered. We need to be very deliberate in going and making sure that we're reaching out and going and hiring teachers of color. Students do better when they go and they see a face that looks like theirs. I've been saying this on the doors every day. We need to go and make sure that when we're going and hiring these teachers, that they have a clear way of going and reporting when something gets said to them that is of a racist nature, that we can go and we can track it, and we have data to work from. And really, if you wanna go and retain people, you have to tell them that they're appreciative. If you don't, they're going to look for another job. They need to go and get money so that they can afford to go and live in the Boston area, one of the most expensive places in the country. If you're not willing to go and pay them and give them the benefits that they need to go and live here, then we're never going to retain them. Thank you.
Hello. I really feel that this is-- this has already always been a generational issue here in Malden. We've always been diverse. It's about time that our staff and our teachers reflect that same diversity. I come-- my family is a multiracial family, and it's, you know, it helps my children when they have a teacher that looks like them, or talks like them, or talks like their grandmother. It gives it-- it gives them a sense of peace, and I feel that every student deserves that. I also feel that we need to look at our actual hiring. Where are we recruiting? Are we recruiting in ethnically diverse areas? Are we taking our students that are doing the internship program, our seniors, into teaching, and they're doing their internships with teachers? Are we following them through college? Are we then asking them to come back and work in our community? And, you know, to reflect, everybody else has said it's true, retaining our teachers, we need to-- we need to compliment them. We need to give them training. We also need to make sure that they have what they need.
Thank you.
As far as retraining or retaining teachers, we actually have to set up some type of a system where teachers can take courses and become administrators in the Malden school system, not in Chelsea or Boston or somewhere else, but to retain them, give them an incentive to stay here if they see that they could become an assistant principal or a principal in Malden. Too many times, we hire people from outside. Also, I think the starting salary is pretty-- I don't think that's the reason, but we did lose 60-- we lost 60 teachers this year that had to be replaced. There has to be a reason, so as they're leaving, we should talk to them and find out exactly why they are leaving. Maybe there's something we can do about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I agree, this is a very complicated question. A few things that come to mind. We need to actually look beyond hiring and recruitment and look at the culture we have in our school system. We need to do the work to really dig in and look at the questions of, is there institutional racism or bias in our school systems and our-- in our practices? And what can we do to support teachers of color and white teachers to be a community together and to have the resources that they need? We also need to look at how we teach. You know, I think we really need-- there is a racial gap in terms of children of color going on to college, more white kids go to college. We have a lot of children of color here. Are we-- are we teaching them in a racially aware way? I think we really need to examine our systems in a very deep way that will be kind of a long-term project. And I-- this is, I don't believe this is a pipeline issue. I really think that there are teachers of color out there, and I agree that we need to pay them more because we're competing with Boston, we're competing with Cambridge and Somerville, who are paying a lot more competitive salaries.
Thank you. So we'd like to switch gears from the teachers to the students and ask, given our national climate, current national climate, which often highlights differences across racial and ethnic groups, how do you think we can alleviate tensions among students from different ethnic backgrounds in Malden? What do you see as the role of schools in creating a more equitable and inclusive community within our city? I'm gonna start over here.
So hardest conversation I ever had with my son, I think he was in second grade. We were walking to school in the middle of February. I look at him, I go, "Hey, how's it going? You know, what are you learning for Black History Month?" And he looks up at me, goes, "Uh, nothing." So we had a long talk on the way to school about the current state of, you know, race in our country, and that was just me talking with, you know, my white blond-haired, blue-eyed little boy. And he looked up at me, he's like, "It's all better now, Mom, right?" And I tell him, "No, it's not all better. Better than it was, but it's not all better yet." We need to make sure that the curriculum includes this. This shouldn't be something that I, as a parent, have to catch, like, "Oh, we aren't actually teaching anything for Black History Month." We need to make sure that our students are getting curriculum that talks about black history, about indigenous history, about Latin his-- you know, Latin Hispanic history. We need to make sure that we're teaching, you know, Asian history. We have a huge Asian population in this-- in the city, and students should know that their history matters, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. It's a very important question. I think that you really have to sort of look at and make sure, we might want to have a conversation about possibly having after-school programs, having clubs where it's racially diverse, and bringing those groups together and sort of start having those conversations where-- we're gonna have these conversations with each other and making sure that these conversations are had, because this is a very tough topic, and you gotta make sure it's going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the first place we could start is by teaching our students to actually see color. So many people say, you know, "I don't see color. I treat everybody the same." We need to acknowledge the different colors our children represent. We need to teach about their different nationalities, whether it's by creating different culture clubs within our schools. And these culture clubs are not just for that culture. We're inviting everybody to be a part and learn about all of the students that are represented there. And not just, you know, we're sitting here talking a lot about our diversity when it comes to color, maybe religion, nationality, but also different abilities, special needs. It really encompasses such a broad range of students that are represented, and we need to take them back and teach our kids to actually acknowledge the color, acknowledge the race, acknowledge the culture, acknowledge the different ability, and then we can all actually see those differences and learn from one another.
Thank you.
If we look at the very foundation of this country, the words of the Constitution are an order to follow, an order to form a more perfect union. We're not there yet. We have a long way to go. If we are deficient in our curriculum, that curriculum needs to be examined from top to bottom. That's the job of the school committee in concert with the various department heads and directors of curriculum. As a school teacher, as a history teacher, you always have to expand your role. You can't just go by what the curriculum says. You teach outside the box. There were times you have to spend a lot more time with regard to, for example, reconstruction, and draw inferences and draw connections as to what happened then, as to what's happening now. You can't teach history without that. Thank you.
So growing up in Westchester County, New York, I've had many fronts of different backgrounds and various colors and beliefs, and during my days in school, we learned about the holidays, the different holidays that everyone celebrated. So with my Jewish friends, we knew about Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, and I knew what a seder was and what they would serve, because they-- it was intentionally taught in the school. And I think that we-- we need to learn about our-- not just our history, but the history of everyone. We know Malden is very diverse. We can celebrate the different holidays that some of the other folks that we really don't know about because we're not taught about them. We need to ask, and we need to-- and I think that once we get together, whether it be, you know, in clubs or in school classroom, we need to learn about other people in the schools.
I like so much of what's already been said, so I'll try to say something new, but I think there's little stuff we can do that's like systematic, things like for the first time ever, especially thanks to Malden Core. Juneteenth is on our school calendar, which is kind of huge. I think there are things like that that spread awareness, but I'm gonna sort of shift and do kind of what Jen did before and say, you know, if we take some time away from the excessive amount of testing that's going on, the unnecessary testing, and we loosen the noose on our teachers, we might be able to allow them to do some things like actually do some real SEL work, developing relationships between our students, but also some creativity within the curriculum. One of the best things that my assistant principal ever did for me when I was teaching eighth-grade history was allowed me to bring in different sources than what was already in the list of things I was supposed to be using. Where you're looking at the American Revolution, and every single primary source is written by a white man, you're not getting a great diversity of viewpoints. So he allowed me to bring in some multiple perspectives. We should be doing those things with all of our teachers and making sure they know and they feel the support from their administration, that they can get creative and bring those things into the classroom to give our kids the multiple perspectives, the diversity that they need.
Thank you. Rachel, go ahead. We're gonna come back.
So I think our national climate right now is awful and is overwhelming, and I think it's absolutely our job, our school district's job, to create a more equitable world. I think that, you know, I support a lot of what some folks have said, but, you know, programs that can promote more compassion and more love, celebrate our diversity. I think social justice being wed into the curriculum is really important, and I would support professional development for our teachers to figure out how to do that. We wanna support, you know, programs that celebrate our cultures and heritages, different family structures, different gender, ooh, different gender expression, and different learning styles and special needs. I really think that social emotional learning and restorative justice practices are incredibly important towards creating that compassion that our students will feel for one another, and that will go on into the larger world.
Thank you. Should I-- should we use this mic, or do we think that one's gonna recover?
I don't know.
All right, let's try it, let's move on.
All right, I have a different perspective on this. While I was growing up, my family, there were seven of us. My father and mother always taught us that nobody was better than us, and we were no better than anybody else, no matter who they were. So I think if that isn't taught in the home, it makes it so much harder for teachers to come across with programs to teach that type of a lesson. Thank you.
I can echo the sentiments of everybody here in saying that it's so very important that our students see not only-- we talk about student-teacher diversity, but it's also curriculum diversity. They have to see themselves in the history and what they've read and what they're learning. It's so very imperative. It's so very imperative to make sure that the children feel inclusive and that they're learning inclusivity at a very young age. One of the things that the Sandy Hook Foundation has a curriculum for the K through 5 is all about inclusion, and it starts with hello. And I think that that's, you know, to Jen's point about seeing color, and I just feel that this is very, very important, and we need to-- we need to take our teachers and we need to offer them to be able to empower themselves into adding this into their curriculum, into having the freedom to do that.
Thank you.
I think that the first thing that we really need to go and do is, we do have to go and make sure that we're going and teaching kids that it is okay to go and see color, because you're seeing someone's identity. You're seeing their programs, you're going and seeing who they are, who they love, and I think that's really important. And we can't erase that, because when we say we're colorblind, we're erasing that. Number two is I think that I agree with Adam, that we can go with a little creativity, we can go and we can allow our teachers to go and bring in alternate sources from-- to actually go and show diversity in our curriculum. And I'd love to go and actually go and include some of Malden's history, because we have a statue in the Malden High School, in the-- in the center of Malden High School, from Louise Stokes, and I don't know of any kid that goes and knows who that statue is for. And I think that we need to actually go and include some of Malden's own diverse history into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a completely different take and spin on this. In my opinion, faculty and staff in the school system and the administration, I think they're doing a wonderful job now, reaching out in as much of a diverse manner as possible. I think the sticking point is at home, where the schools can't reach. If there's a problem in your family, that shows up in school. The schools are diverse. They've been for a great amount of time. The teachers bent over backwards to teach diversity about all sorts of cultures, religions, ethnicities, sexes, you name it. I think it's less about the schools and more about at home. If a child comes into the school with a biased attitude, that biased attitude is gonna stick throughout their school tenure. Thank you.
I think-- I think we need to add more programs that--
I think, I think we need to add more programs that can help with the diversity, like just to show the diversity for these kids and make it fun. And we're fortunate at the For Sale School to have a principal that celebrates this and gives our teachers freedom to do a little bit more of this than I think it, I think that's happening at some of the other schools. And we'd like to see more of this happening at the other schools as well.
Thank you.
So we're on to our last question, and the last question is more general. We want to know what you see as the most pressing needs in our school system and how your perception of what is important will shape the way you think about the next fiscal year's school budget. What are the most pressing needs in the school district in the upcoming year and how do your thoughts about that question shape how you're thinking about next year's budget? And if you can pack the mic down, I think we'll start, did we, yeah, Rachel at the end.
Thank you. So I think one of the most pressing needs, as I mentioned, was really solving our substitute teacher crisis, which carries a lot. It might sound simple, but you know, when teachers are taking their deserved family medical leave, students are often left with rotating lists of subs in their classrooms, sometimes a new one each day, and those kids aren't learning. So I think we have some issues like that that we really need to kind of address straight away. And I think, you know, in general, I think that we really also need to look at some of these long-term issues in terms of diversity, and I think we need to start now. You know, that's the really big issue to me. You know, we all talk about these and I think Keatley mentioned, some of this stuff has come up, you know, year after year and it doesn't feel like we're moving. I think we're ready to move and I think we can move. And so I want, I have some short-term goals and I have some longer-term goals and I can't wait.
Thank you.
I think one of the most pressing needs is, as always, is money. Now, that bill that's in the State House is a panacea. We don't know if it's going to pass through the House of Representatives, so that might help us out. But we need money to start new programs. As I formally mentioned or earlier mentioned, we should have a vocational program at Malden High School. We belong to a vocational school, not each regional vocational, but that only takes care of 42 students out of 400 in each class. So I think that's one of our pressing needs.
Thank you.
One of the pressing needs that I really, that I really look at in thinking in diversity, certainly one of them, but for me, it's really making sure our K through eight schools from the very beginning are so equal. We need to really work towards making sure that all the programs are offered across our schools. It's also safety. We have a huge bullying issue and I really spent the last couple of months looking at this issue as I'm a bullying survivor, so I know what it was like back then and I know what I've taken with me into adulthood. And for me, the Sandy Hook Promise is free to our districts. It's a free program to implement. So we need to look at different grants and different other opportunities that we can build and to build into our curriculums and build into our school system that are free, that's grant money. That's why I want to see us move that and to make our dollars grow a little bit more.
Yeah, I think we're going to see it echoed throughout the table that, you know, the biggest challenge that comes into Malden is, and it's always going to be finding money to go and find all these things that we want to go and do. I'd like to go and see us go and hire a grant writer to go and take some of the pressure off of the superintendent and off the principals for going and finding grants, applying for the grants. It's an intensive process. It takes time away from them going and running their schools. I think if we can go and get one, then we can go, we can certainly go and then find money to go and pay for, you know, after-school care programs, go and find money to go and work on diversity issues, go and find money to go and then work on finding other school resources, our sports programs, our arts programs. And I think that won't take a lot of pressure. It's one of the things that I really want to go and concentrate if I'm elected.
My highest priority is turning back the clock. We literally have a major problem. Think of it this way, if the school expenses increase about seven to eight percent per year, but the budget to run the schools only increases about three percent per year, do the math, something's got to give. Over the last decade, we've lost programs. Critical programs get cut every single year. Critical programs that we already need have been cut every single year. Somehow, maybe we can turn back the clock with some of what these people are suggesting and we can find grants and we can find money somewhere. But if we don't somehow stabilize the budget situation, then proposing new ideas becomes sort of moot. We can't do anything if we're tied up deciding what gets cut next year. Thank you.
I think the pressing needs are definitely the teachers' pay needs to increase, the diversity and the equity between the schools, definitely. All of those things are very important and if we can do grant writing, anything like that to increase the amount of funds coming in to support these, we'll be able to do a lot more.
Yes, to the end. So I did want to just echo really quickly what Rachel said about the substitute teacher issue. We are not paying our subs anywhere near enough and it is causing problems for our children right now. The bigger issue that I want to talk about with the rest of my time is equity across our K to eights schools. We switched recently from these sort of specialized school choices to neighborhood schooling. We haven't done all the work that we need to do to get the schools caught up with this new reality. We are currently quitting the vast majority of our SEI one, our English language learners who need to be separated in one school, and we are not making sure that that school has enough resources for these children who are, just need more resources to get through their education. We need to make sure that we are taking care of the students that we've got now and we're putting the resources in to make sure they're getting the services that they need and deserve. And we can't do that unless we're making sure that each one of our K to eights gets all the attention, the respect, the advocacy, and the money that they need to serve those kids.
Thank you very much for that question. I actually do agree with the sentiments of what Mr. Bernard said. I think it would be extremely important if we actually did go out and hire a full-time grant writer, going out and being able to get those monies. It always comes back to money. And I think that if we were able to get that certain money in having a full-time grant writer, going out and being able to look for grants regarding diversity and stuff like that, sports programs and after-school arts and athletics with health teachers, I think that would be extremely important from my perspective. But as Mr. Freo said, it always comes back down to money and hopefully the Student Opportunity Act is able to sort of cushion that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. So every single one of yous have stolen my answer tonight, so I probably could just hand the mic over. I totally agree with the grant writers. We need to disperse our SEI, ELL, Students of Month, all the schools. The Salem Wood is carrying such a burden right now, housing, such a large, it's essentially I would love to see a fully funded after-school program where parents don't have to worry about whether or not their children are going to be sitting at home by themselves or whether they have to take a night shift job instead. I think we all have a wish list that comes down to money, something we don't have. And until that happens, we need to be fiscally responsible with the money we do have and prioritize the biggest or what we're lacking in the district the most, so thank you.
Again, this is not a 60-second question. There are a number of priorities that need to be taken care of. We need to update our safety protocols. We need to update and to make sure that all of our spent youngsters and all of our ELL youngsters, the English language learners, that all of the services that they are entitled to are being met. And please, State House of Representatives, if the devil is in the details, you better work him out. Because this Opportunity Act, the Student Opportunity Act, everything we've spoken about tonight has a cost. Every single thing you're talking about, translating, hiring teachers, look, we all live in a budget at home. You do, I do. And when you add something, something else has to go. So unless the great white father, the Quamawalta of Massachusetts, comes through with the money that we need under the Student Opportunity Act, we're not going to survive. Right now, we're not just treading water, we're doing well. We had an increase in the budget this year through the efforts of this school committee and through our state legislators. We were able to add 10 new teachers. That's the first time in many years I can ever remember that we weren't asked to cut, cut, cut.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So some of the pressing needs that I see from Malden Public Schools, it's of course hiring additional teachers to reduce the class size. The classes are way overcrowded. We need to hire more paraprofessionals to help with the special education students that are in the classrooms. I believe if we hire paras and couple them with the teacher in the classroom, I'm certain that my boy is getting his work done and his 504 plan is being implemented and he's learning equitably, just like everybody else in the class. I'd also like to reduce the time that it takes to evaluate the special education students. I think that that's important too. Forty days is way too long when my boy needs special services that he would have to wait 40 days. So additionally, I'd like to, I'd like to have affordable and adequate before and after school care. I know that since Jeremiah's been transferred to the Ferryway, it's actually free where it was not at the Salem Wood. And, you know, I think that we should, across the board, it should be a little more equitable.
I'm going to split mine up into cost and no cost.
I think no cost, the biggest priority and issue I think is communication, and that's top to bottom. Also, relationship building with the community, but I think our communication right now is straight up embarrassing. You know, we've got school committee members who don't get emails back from central office. That's unacceptable. We've got parents who find out about major changes to their child's education at public forums. That's unacceptable. So I think the, where we are right now communication-wise is not great. So when you lengthen or shorten a school day, when you change out your school programs, you should know about it in advance. And your school committee members should be your avenue to get that information. Financially, I think, you know, I echo and agree with the substitute issue. I think we need building substitutes as permanent positions. I don't think we need to rely on the way we've been doing subs for X amount of years. It'd be great to have a grant writer. Sounds like we've been losing a lot of grants lately, so it'd be great to have a grant writer. And I think we need to hire the staff that we need. I mean, right now, we've got not enough special educators, caseloads of 25. It's out of control. So I think budgeting and paying for what we actually currently need before we even think about what's next would be a really great place to start.
Thank you. So I really don't need this for more than two seconds. Yeah, of course, it'll take a while.
So we are going to move into closing remarks. Each candidate is going to have one minute for their closing remarks, and Renee, if it's okay, I'm going to start with you this time.
Okay. You go out this way. Okay. You may have noticed I'm not the best speaker up here, but you should know I'm a really hard worker. Ask anybody that's worked with me. I'm really a hard worker and I really care. Care about our kids and I care about everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any closing remarks except to say that we need to fight for our children. It always comes back in various ways, even here tonight on this panel, about the budget, grants, all that thereof. How are we going to achieve the different things we want to do without the money to do them? It starts getting nearly impossible. We need to fight for our children. We need fighters on the school committee who are going to hold the line against more cuts. We can't get translators, we can't get teachers, we can't get diverse teaching elements. We can't do anything if we're going to be faced with where to cut in the coming year. I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but that's who I am. That's what we need to do as an administrative body, fight for what's best for the Malden Public Schools. Thank you.
I think I speak for everyone here when you don't go and put yourself out, pull papers, knock doors, put up signs, talk to your neighbors, if you don't love your community. If you don't go above your family, you don't love your kids. I want to go and make sure that every voice in Ward 7 knows that they are my family and I love them. And I will do my darndest, not the word I was going to use, but then I realized where I was, to make sure that their voices are heard, they get the services that they need. And we're going to do everything in our power and everything in my power to make sure that their kids get the best education that they can possibly get from all the public school systems.
It's so important for us to remember that education is such a cornerstone of a young person's mind, and every single solitary student, regardless of their economic status, their race, their disability, their gender, their gifted mind, all deserve the same education. It doesn't matter if you live on the east side of Malden, the west side of Malden, if you're a first high, if you've been here for two weeks or 20 years, your children deserve the best. And as a school committee person, I promise to advocate for all students to have educational excellence. I have for 12 years and I'll continue to do that for every single person that I've grown up with and I've lived beside and worked towards, for everybody to be counted.
I actually think of all the children in the school system, in the schools, they're all even after they're out of school, but they're my children. Everywhere I go, I meet my former students. And it really makes me feel good that they've all, most of them made out while they're married and have children. So Malden is where I want to be. Thank you.
I want to be your next school committee representative for Ward 8, and I will continue to work hard to earn your vote and respect. I want you to please reach out to me if you have any questions about where I stand on an issue or if there's anything. There's a lot tonight, but I have a lot more to say, and I really want to hear your concerns and hear what's going on with you. As a parent of two current students, I'm on school grounds daily and speaking with parents and sharing concerns. As a school committee member, I will continue these conversations in a more formal way with an open door policy and actively reach out to parents to ensure our community voices are well-represented. Together, we can shape the future. We can tackle difficult problems like lack of diversity among our teachers, budget restrictions, bullying. We can find common ground to support our students, our educators, and our families, and I will help facilitate that. I'm ready to listen, learn, and lead for Malden.
All right. Thank you so much for having us here. I'm really excited to get back to work. I didn't know how excited I was until this opportunity came up again. I'm appreciative to Tara for her hard work, but I'm especially appreciative to the families and residents of Ward 5 because they already know how hard I'm going to work for them. And if possible, I think I'm going to work a little bit harder because now I've got a building full of kids, including Renee's three, who know me as Mr. Adam, who know I'm fighting for them too. So, you know, I'm really looking forward to being that voice. I'll always be honest with you, even if the answer is I don't know. I'll always tell you where I stand. We're fortunate that we've got a great school committee, we got a great school committee chairman, who I look forward to re-electing as our mayor. And I think that we've got a lot of opportunity, and we can, we can get this stuff done together. So thank you for your vote of confidence to Ward 5. And I look forward to working with everyone up here for the benefit of our kids.
We all want what's best for our children, and I think that I can offer a different cultural and current perspective to the committee. I'd love to partner up with Ward 4 folks and folks across Malden and share ideas and different viewpoints and how we can make Malden Public School the best educational experience for our children. Thank you. Vote Don Mattlin, Ward 4, School Committee.
I first of all wanna extend my thanks to the group that brought about this candidate's forum. It is enlightening. It gives us an opportunity to be heard, other than just to those with whom we live, and we can bore them sometimes. But I just wanna say that as an educator in the city of Malden for many years, I fully support the important work that all of our teachers and administrators do each and every day of the school year as they attempt to meet the needs of all of our students. I believe all of our teachers and administrators are committed to ensuring success. The Malden School Committee is here to provide you with tools, support, and the training necessary to better the work that you do in our diverse and ever-changing city. I look forward to your support, and I humbly ask for your vote on Tuesday, November the 5th. I'm Lana Iovino, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Malden School Committee for Ward 4. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. Two years ago, I pulled papers as a parent that was just tired. Tired of not getting phone calls back, tired of countless IEP meetings with nothing coming about. And I decided, if I'm the only, I'm experiencing this, someone else has to be going through the same exact situation. Two years later, I'm still that parent that still struggles with IEP meetings or having her voice heard. But I now have two years of experience of being a voice, two years of being a fighter. I will continue that for the next two years. I will continue to speak loud. I will continue to fight for the students, for the teachers, for the parents, for anybody that feels as though their voice is not being heard. I will be that voice for you. So I look forward to serving the next two years as the Ward 3 School Committee representative, and I look forward to seeing everybody at the polls November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the moderator and the different groups that put together this candidate's forum this evening. My name is Robert S. McCarthy Jr., and I am currently running for reelection to the Malden School Committee for Ward 2. I'm running for reelection to the, to the Ward 2 School Committee seat, because I believe every one of our children deserves an education without limitations. Our schools are strongest when they meet every child where they provide, and when they, when they thrive. With a master's degree in school leadership and administration, I'm also working in the field of education on a daily basis, and I have the commitment and experience to work for all of our children here in the Malden Public Schools. I want to continue to create educational policies and enhance the learning environment in all of our schools. It's been my honor and privilege to be able to serve on the Malden School Committee as a Ward 2 School Committee representative. That's why I respectfully ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to the organizers for making this happen. My name is Anna Jeffrey, and I'm running for Ward 2 School Committee. As I said in the beginning, you know, the thing that I've spent most of my time on over the last decade has been activism. It's been yelling on behalf of people who maybe can't yell for themselves. I've been out in the neighborhoods in Ward 2, listening to families, listening to parents and students, and I've been listening to teachers in the community. We disagree on some things, but we agree on a lot more. We all wanna make sure that our schools are a safe place for all of our students to be and to learn. We wanna make sure that they have access to recess and the arts and other things that are critical to their development. And we wanna make sure that everyone is being heard, that people are part of the discussions that matter so much, and have an input on the decisions that affect them. I've always been this kind of fighter. I hope to be this kind of fighter at school committee for all of you, and I ask for your vote this November 5th.
Thank you. Thank you to all the school committee. I just wanna thank all of the candidates for sharing their thoughts, and I'm gonna pass it back over for closing.
Thank you everyone for coming. I would also like to thank the Urban Rearch, which is formerly known as MATV, for filming this forum. I would also like to thank the Asian Community Development Corporation for providing the translating machines, the Chinese Progressive Association for providing the translating machines at the Council on Large Forum, the Transfitters of Hubble's Hour, and all the KICO volunteers, MyFell A-Boys Youth, and any other volunteers that came. I'd also like to thank Reverend, Reverend O'Connor and the First Parish Church for hosting the forum. And last but not least, I would like to thank Gretchen for being the moderator for this forum. We have a little present for you.
Thank you. How unnecessary. I'm going to officially close the forum. Thank you everyone for coming.